You know, we are good to begin. These meetings. That you met. Just waiting on a couple of technical things. We'll start our, our meeting. We're good. Alrighty. I would call this, this meeting to order at seven oh four. If we can have a roll call, then we'll do the pledge.
Yeah, we'll start with the mayor. I believe you have a special hat for us this evening.
Here.
Thank you. And Vice President Diane Law.
Yeah.
Deb Cassini Klein.
Here.
Matt Castilla.
Here.
Rob Purchat Williams. Make sure if someone can help me just make sure we didn't miss her in the. The attendees. Okay.
Checking both. I do not see her in attendance currently.
Adam McDowell.
Here.
Here.
Valerie Renthaler.
Here.
And of course, President Jay Dorn.
I am still here. And if you would rise if you're able for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation. All right, all right. We are back. All right. Next time we see each other, spring will actually have sprung and we won't get major snowstorms in between. Right now. Welcome to the March meeting. As always, we will begin with our public comments from our public. So if you are able to raise your hand, if you're interested. We will call you, promote you and move you forward to having comments. I see we have at least one hand raised, which is Ken Balki. So we'll start with Ken. And then if you can promote him and then Kate, you'll be after, after Ken. So. Ken, you've been promoted. If you want to unmute, you have three minutes. If you can state your name, of course, and address, we can begin.
Okay, Ken Balki, who zero zero seven Hampstead Drive. And I have two comments, ones dealing with trees, not mine. And then I also have one dealing with my, with my property, but it, other residents may be interested in the situation we have. Dealing with the trees, over the weekend, I took a call from a resident. I think I, unfortunately, I was unable to join the workshop meeting last week. I think people were aware of Duquesne Light is really being pretty aggressive at taking a number of trees out near the power lines. Well, here, a resident called me yesterday, quite concerned that they got a letter from Duquesne Light on Saturday saying that they were going to remove a pretty sizable tree from this person's property. The issue was the tree, this individual just spent a lot of money to a reputable tree company to have the tree cabling put in and also had large limbs removed, you know, to present it. And I felt really, my heart was really off for the individual and they were leaving town for a month. So they tried calling Duquesne Light. There was a number to call. They couldn't reach it on the weekend. So I reached out, I told the individual to reach Alex, given we do have a point of contact at Duquesne Light. But the, the point was that this individual went to great expense to keep their tree in appropriate condition. And now have Duquesne Light come and take it out to double hit a loser tree. And they just spent all the money was for naught. So I just want folks to be aware from the borough that if somebody runs into a similar situation, that we do have a point of contact at Duquesne Light if, if somebody runs into a similar case. So that was why. And then dealing with the trees, I think at your last meeting, people raised concern about the trees being removed from the Westinghouse property. A few folks can speak to it because I took emails from a lot of people wondering what it was. I think I have the answer and I don't have the answer. And the last thing I have is that, I think you're where my home is one, there's several throughout the borough. Where when we get wet season, I mean, we get mine water coming up through our wall and our driveway. It was so extensive a couple of weeks ago. Somebody called in a water line break on our home. We ended up having West Penn Joint Water Authority knock on our door, say, you have a break. And we said, no, it's mine water. But I've, I've talked to some other residents and I was just curious, council may not, this big question probably for Alex or Ralph, that if the DEP or has DEP or the mine subsidence part of the state, have they been able to help folks like ourselves or other folks in the borough? Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. I appreciate it. I, I don't know unless Alex, if you have a, an answer for that at all.
I'll follow up with him offline.
But okay, that'll work great.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Moving forward, we have Kate Carrigan Hill.
Hi, this is Kate Carrigan Hill. I live at fourteen forty one Beulah Road. And I have a comment and then a question. My comment is, I remember the first time I got on a meeting and it was back in probably early February, March of last year, and the discussion ended up being about chickens and number of chickens allowed in Churchill. And I've been on obviously many, many meetings since then, and I could never figure out what bothered me, but I knew there was something. And I found out recently that, I don't know how many years ago, but it used to be that the meeting would take place. And then there would be time for public comments after that, because many times during these meetings, many questions or concerns or ideas come up that, that I'd like to ask about at the end of a meeting and actually have the questions or concerns addressed. So that's my comment. My question is, when would we go to a meeting where the meeting takes place with, with all of this information that's given? And then the public gets to ask questions about that meeting? That's what I have to ask for this evening. Thanks.
Thank you, Kate. And to give you kind of the quick answers, being that I, I think I'm the, still the senior person on, on council. The, the time that we actually used to have people that at the end of the meeting is also when we used to have Monday, Tuesday meetings. And so as you may recall, we used to have our workshop meeting on Monday and then the following, the, the next day, we would have our, our, our voting meeting, our business meeting, now that you can't vote at the workshop. There were some changes made around that time when we changed it to a Monday workshop and then a month, then a following week, which means that most of the things that were up for discussion at the workshop, right? When you come to public meeting on the business, you can actually make a comment too, because that was what was discussed at the workshop. So that was kind of how that, that changed. That changed before I certainly was, uh, was head of council. But that's kind of how that took place. In terms of how you make comment, I think one of the great suggestions I would make to, to people who want to, of kind of Q and A, there, there's two things. One, in managing this, a couple of different points, we found that Q and A became very kind of difficult when it became a back and forth between council and a resident, if they had a personal disagreement. That happened about six or seven years ago, a couple of times. And so they changed that specifically to, to stop the Q and A, because quite frankly, whether an individual felt they were wronged or not, the disrespect that had happened at that time, and again, I was not the, the president of council at that time, made it, made better sense. So what we found though, is that when we're able to answer questions, just like now that we do, if it's something that's more intensive, then we take it offline, as you just heard. And so, you know, the majority of time we're able to answer, we may not answer to people's satisfaction. That's a different question, but we do the best that we can to answer the question. So I appreciate your comment and question. We're going to move forward to, I see April has her hand up as well. We can, there you go. April, you are over, so you can unmute if you would like to speak. So your phone lineup.
Hi Jay, it's April Klein. I have two comments tonight. One, I want to thank at eighteen Holland Road, I'm sorry, April Klein, eighteen Holland Road. I want to thank Mayor Paul Gamrat for following up on a concern I brought up last month regarding garbage cans being curbside at two Holland Road. Paul responded and he actually talked to the, to the resident, to the people working at that address. And then he stopped by my house to give me an update. So that, that's very much appreciated. I am concerned that we don't have a code officer at the time. Paul shared with me that the borough no longer has a code officer. And that's a concern considering home improvements that are going on in the neighborhood and the potential construction up at the former Westinghouse site. Also, I want to thank council for permitting the Churchill Garden Club to have our March meeting in the Jäger Room. We really appreciate that. It's just so much easier for us to meet there and it saves the garden club a lot of money that we could use on other programming. So that's it. Thanks, Jay.
Thank you, April. I appreciate your comments. You know, one, I'm glad to hear that, that someone got directly back with you in that space. I think that's a, that's nice to know as well. But on the, on the other side of it, in the code enforcement, you know, I see Alex is already on, on the unmute. So if you want to comment, I can comment after.
Yeah, no, I don't want to say anything disrespectful, but we do have a code enforcement and, and in fact, on that particular issue, that particular property and then a lot of properties get letters about garbage cans. Unfortunately, and in other things, in fact, I got a railing today in a possible carport that somebody installed without a permit. So we actually do proactive hours where they drive around looking for possible issues like this. You know, so they're not just reacting to complaints where they're looking at, you know, potential problems for the borough.
Yeah, I, I think what, what April was referring to and probably what, what Paul was referring to was the cog program.
Correct. We're no longer with that.
No long, no longer is, is working. So. But yes.
We use BIUs, the code enforcement contractor, third party service for the borough.
Thank you. And thank you for, for your comment, April, as, as always. I appreciate it. Moving forward, we have, looks like Sandy, Sandy Fox. You have been promoted, Sandy, so then you want to unmute the floor of shorts. I don't know if you heard me, Sandy, but you are unmuted, so, or you are promoted. So if you want to unmute, as soon as you're able to, you'll have your three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I was Sandy Fox, thirty eight Holland Road. Last week at the workshop meeting, Kathy Boardner and Murray Bilby, Bilby asked questions about the trees and I, I didn't hear a response. So I also have that question and Ken mentioned a number of residents do. I'd like to know more about the number of trees that have been taken down on the Westinghouse, former Westinghouse property and the reasons. That's all.
Not a problem, Sandy. And to, to remind you, last week, the response actually was that we don't necessarily know it's a private property issue. I did say last week, of course, that it, we have the tree committee, which then reports to the climate action. And that would be the course that would, that would happen there. So it wasn't a non-response. As I said, sometimes we're not able to give you the response that everybody wants. But the responses, you know, I'll repeat again, is that it's private property. So we don't have a detailed information on what their activities are at this point. However, it has been referred to the tree committee who can report it with the climate action committee. Is there anybody else who had a comment? I want to give a, a minute here, as I always do, see if somebody raises a hand. Okay, I'm not seeing any others. So I am, unless I'm missing something, Alex, I'm going to close public comment at this time. And we're going to move forward with the agenda, moving into our ordinary items, beginning with number three.
Mr. President, I move to accept the meeting minutes from the Monday, February seven, twenty twenty two Borough Council Workshop Meeting and Monday, February fourteen, twenty twenty two, regular council meeting.
Second.
Thank you and thank you. Is there any discussion on, on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And the minutes are accepted, opposition. Moving on to the marriage reports.
Thank you, Mr. President. As reported to me, as reported to me, I wish to inform council there, but no unusual events and no serious crimes during the month of February two thousand twenty two. Officers responded to nine hundred and thirty seven calls for service, resulting in five arrests. Chief Ronald Ackley has reported the total amount of magisterial fines collected for the month of February twenty twenty two was four hundred and six dollars and forty one cents. The total for the year twenty twenty two was seven hundred and sixty four dollars and forty four cents. The department's five police vehicles logged four thousand two hundred and nine miles in the past month. On February, February first, two thousand twenty two, at varying different times, officers from multiple local jurisdictions were involved in vehicle pursuits throughout the morning and afternoon hours with a vehicle that had been reported stolen from Tortle Creek. At approximately sixteen fifty eight hours that day, our officers encountered a stolen vehicle now traveling north on Beulah Road approaching William Penn Highway. Officers were able to box the vehicle in, at which time the actor's vehicle became lodged on a curb while attempting to escape. And the driver then fled on foot. A foot pursuit followed with the assistance of several officers from other agencies. The actor was apprehended on Osay's Drive in the Blackridge Plan. The actor was later determined to be a sixteen year old juvenile who was wanted by multiple jurisdictions for various crimes relating to vehicle theft, armed robbery, carjacking, and is also a suspect in a homicide that occurred in the city of Pittsburgh. A stolen firearm was also recovered from a stolen vehicle which he was operating. Chief also reported, for the first time in the department's history, we will be participating in the East Hills DUI Task Force. The team currently consists of officers from many local participating agencies such as Plum, Penn Hills, Monroeville, North Frisells, Oakmont and White Oak and Edgewood. Wilkins Township will also be a new team member this year. The task force is primarily funded by grant monies available through the state and has always been proven to be extremely effective in intervening and apprehend, apprehending intoxicated and impaired motorists. This proactive program undoubtedly save the lives. Details and other related statistics concerning the police department during the month of February twenty twenty two are reported on the attached police department records. And I have one, one more item. This was a letter received from officer or from Chief Ron Ackley dated February sixteenth, sent, sent in by, not a resident, but a, a, someone who's passing through. I just wanted to acknowledge Officer Lewandowski. My name is Sharon Collins and I was in a horrible accident today on the Parkway East. Officer Lewandowski was the first on the scene and he could not have been kinder and helped me through a very traumatic time. I was badly shaken and a little bit in shock, but Officer Lewandowski was so patient. He helped me calm down and make me, and make me realize that everything was going to be okay. He explained everything that was going on, was going to happen, and then offered to take me back to Churchill Police Station where I could then arrange for someone to come and pick me up. Especially during these times in our world, I think that when a police officer goes above and beyond, he deserves rightful praises. I was just want to thank Officer Lewandowski once again.
Thank you. Just have an intended motion to accept the marriage report.
Same move.
Second.
Any discussion on said report?
Oh, I was just going to say the comment that, you know, if, if you haven't had a chance to meet Officer Lewandowski, it's, I, I think a lot of people would share the same opinion that he's a wonderful police officer to have on our force and I've always found him to be above and beyond helpful. So, so glad to hear that. And we'll keep, say our prayers for our police and their safety as they continue to do great work for the borough.
True enough. Also, a resident of Churchill.
Correct.
If I can just throw that in. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the marriage report is accepted without opposition. This moves us on to the treasurer's report and bills, I believe.
Mr. President, I move to accept the treasurer's report for the month ending February twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, and to direct the finance officer to pay the bills for the borough of Churchill accrued since February fourteenth, twenty twenty two.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? As a matter of course, even though now we posted up and it's all for, for anyone who chooses to read it, I still the process of reading any bill that's over the amount of fifteen thousand dollars, one day I will cut that out of the, the agenda to, to expedite our meeting, but I still do. Mostly to, so I can point out, you know, our, where we're spending it, make sure people are paying attention. And it begins this, this month with Gateway Engineers, the amount of thirty seven thousand, three hundred and thirty seven dollars and fifty three cents.
So Jay, I have to apologize because it looks like to me, and I don't know what Michelle, you're seeing, that these were
I'm reading January, yep.
Yeah, not transferred properly to the agenda. And I don't know how that happened because I know we had gone over this a couple of times, but it's my fault. So Michelle, if you could, if you don't mind, if I go on to fly with you, you want to look at the ones we have, I know we didn't have as many. In fact, the gateway bill was quite a bit less for the month of February. If I could put you on the spot, because I think they made their way into the binder. And you might be able to unmute yourself and do the president of council favor. Meanwhile, I will mute myself and find that file quickly if you can, because I know we like to read those bills.
And that, and not a word that requires apology. You guys do, you know, an outstanding job and, you know, going one for, you know, a year and a half is, is okay. You know, we'll, we'll, we'll live. Trust me. So if you're able to, that's great. If not, quite frankly, we post it, it'll be posted back up on, on the website, you know, it's always made available to, to the public. Just as a matter of course, I like to read them, but let, let this be the, the one time that I don't read them. I think if, if people want to really be upset with me, I understand. I bet there's a lot of other reasons you could really be upset with me beyond that. So, so I'll go forward with that. So you don't, you don't have, unless you can find it right away. So.
I am looking. It might take me a, a minute, but I'm looking for it.
Yeah, I got it. I'm just going to get it here for a share screen. If you can give me a moment, please. And I will share a screen. So all I'm doing, Michelle, is I'm pulling them out of your report. So if you, if you can see, this is the right one, I believe. If I'm seeing now that I'm pulling up to, yeah, I'm pulling up last month. Sorry about that. Yeah, I was like, I, I call, I see a small print. So let me just stop that and give Michelle another minute as I'm looking for.
Work her way through it. And it's, you know, it's not as if you were up to, and then let somebody score a hat trick on you. Come back and, and beat you that way. So there's nothing to be ashamed of. That's not a shameful moment for you.
Okay.
I'll be sure after the meeting to post them.
Not a problem. It's just so everyone knows, we'll, we'll make sure it's posted on the website. You know, you know, every so often, you know, and not very often with them, or with me, something happens, you know, it's kind of like falling to eighth. You know, you want to be in the top four, but sometimes you just end up down to eighth if it happens.
You're too kind.
So.
Thank you.
That, that being said, we will, we've got two motions on the floor. Is there any discussion on, on our single motion on the two, the two items? Any discussions? Okay, having none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And treasurer's report accepted, bills are paid. This moves us on to number seven.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve resolution four, five, three, seven of the borough of Churchill. Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, making application to Pennsylvania Gaming statewide local share account grant program for seventy five thousand dollars for the Churchill Borough Dynamic Safety Road Sign Project.
Do you have a second? You, any discussion? And this is the, the yours be digital sign that we were encouraged and thankful to our state senator for pointing this out. It's an opportunity for us. You know, our Senator Jay Costa has always been one who's tried to look out for our community and we appreciate it yet again. Any other discussion on the matter?
Well, recently we have worked with PennDOT and one, on their initial investigation of Beulah Road, which has been a concern for many in the borough for a number of years, they determined that ninety five percent of travelers are going fast enough to, to be ticketed. What that means is to me that we all need to really think a lot about our speed as we're going through our community and recognize that just can't all be outsiders. If it's ninety five percent, it's a good possibility. There's a lot of borough residents who are indulging in exceeding the speed limit significantly enough to be ticketed. That's a great concern. So these will be one of the locations where we look to place some of these signs. And of course, it's a process of permitting and design installation and all of that. And we want to have them in a couple of locations around the borough. These would alert you. You might've seen them in other parts of the state or in other parts of the country where they'll tell you what the speed limit is and it will give you your speed in relation to that.
Got to look forward to it. We're thankful that we have an opportunity to get, get some money for it, to be quite frank. Any other discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed without opposition. This moves us on to number eight.
Mr. President, I move to approve resolution four, five, three, eight of the borough of Churchill, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, making five appointments to the Churchill Borough Recreation Board. Deborah Klein for one year, Janet Paul and Joseph Kudelnicki Jr., each for a two-year term. And Marty Baron and Sharon Pedradde and Michael O'Brien each for a three-year term.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I would just point out one that to thank you. As of course, our, our council member, of course, is, is on the committee itself. And also thanks to everyone for their, their willingness to, to serve again for Churchill. We look forward to it.
I also want to mention, we're still with me. We can accommodate a couple more members if there's people out there who might be interested.
Always room for, for more help. Say that. Those who are, might be interested, remember that the, the record's done a wonderful job. As we come out of COVID, you know, hopefully, fingers crossed. We look forward to, to the Community Day that was so successful in the past and other like activities.
Just, just to mention too, we'll also be at for Easter Bunny Parade.
Yes. And let us not forget the Easter Bunny Parade. This is, this is one that.
Double duty here.
Yeah. My, my daughter has figured out you are not the actual Easter Bunny.
Oh gosh, no, no.
Realizes that now, but that's okay. We'll sort it out.
I hope she still likes me enough.
Yes, indeed. Okay, any lost my space. Any other discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and welcome back to everyone exposed to a lot of that stuff, but we greatly appreciate. Moving on to number nine.
Mr. President, I move that we direct the borough manager to proceed with purchasing a new hybrid police interceptor patrol vehicle as budgeted in the twenty twenty two capital budget, fifty one thousand dollars.
Second.
Thank you and thank you. Is there any discussion on the matter? Thank you and thank you. Is there any discussion on the matter? We've discussed it fairly at length, both in the process of which we have old cars, the mileage gets up and we replace them. We try to sell them at a bit different point. So it's time for for standing. Any other discussion?
Let me make one comment about that. That's going to be replacing the two thousand seventeen Ford interceptor that right now has ninety-six thousand, five hundred and forty-three miles on.
It's the sweet spot of police cars, I can tell you. Who knew? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Passes without opposition. Moving on to discussion items, I'm going to work through our staff first. Beginning with our public workshop, Mr. Wilson, I mean, the floor is yours. Any comments that you'd like?
Thank you, Mr. President. The only comment I have is I think the guys did a really good job over the weekend with the big storm. It kept us up pretty long, but you know, we finally were able to catch up with it and cleaning it up pretty good. So I think everything went really well that over the weekend was that. The other thing I have is that the fire department is looking for members. As of right now, we're up to a hundred calls for the year, which is a lot for getting into three months. So we've been pretty busy there. So if anybody is interested during the fire department, please come and join or give me a call to our office. Happy to have you. Thank you.
Standing and we appreciate what you all do on both ends of that, quite frankly. Wonderful job again on on the streets and of course, you know, not enough can be said in terms of volunteering in the fire department. We can, we can always, anyone who's able to, we appreciate the help without saying yet, we need to say.
I just had a question, Ralph. What what night are the fire department meetings?
Thursday night, second Thursday of every month.
Thank you.
Unless there's anything for Ralph, we move forward to the solicitor.
I have nothing to report, Mr. President.
Need that to be true. Thank you very much. I appreciate you, manager.
Just move or I guess one thing would be the website and looking to do savvy citizen. So stay tuned. If you are subscribed to Swift Reach, you'll be getting notices to ignore that and to subscribe to Savvy Citizen. We already have a couple hundred people from the borough have signed up for Savvy Citizen. So that's good. But stay tuned for more messaging on that.
Outstanding. Finance officer, Michelle, anything you'd like to add today?
Nothing to report at this time, but I want to thank you, council, for allowing me the opportunity to work with you and the residents of Churchill. I'm very excited for this opportunity.
Excited to have you and your commitment to a Churchill background.
Thank you. Thank you.
And to our our borough engineer, Dennis, any anything?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick updates as we've got some of the infrastructure projects kicked off for the year. The Churchill paving program that is currently out for bid, so we'll have that for next month's meeting. Also, our sanitary sewer and storm sewer repair projects. Those are currently out, so you may see soil like construction out and about completing excavation repairs, manhole to manhole liners by Jetjack and CCTV by State Pipe Contracting.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it as always. Anybody that comes with a any announcements that they would like to make? Absolutely.
I just had a a quick question on committees. I know at some point it was discussed about having like monthly kind of formal reports for inclusion in the binder. I didn't know if we were still moving in that direction.
We are moving that.
I noticed a couple, but I hadn't seen some of the other.
Little bit of a of an issue pop up in front of us that that kind of derailed a few of us, but we're definitely staying in that direction.
Perfect. Thanks.
Absolutely. A small thing, just kind of sidetracked us for a minute. Anything else? All righty, that being the case, then I think it would have entertained a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'm looking at this. Yeah, why don't we do that? So so as as we adjourn, I will announce we're going to have a brief executive session to discuss litigation issues and then we'll we'll move our way out. So thank you, everyone, for your time. Have a wonderful night and have a great spring. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.